Yeah, we'll just let the folks filter in for a second. Okay, back into the roll call while we're doing that. Ms. Wells?
Here.
Mr. Bryce?
Looking for the unmute, I'm here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Ms. DeBachnik?
Here.
Ms. Excuse me, Ms. Langgallis?
Here.
Mr. Muschak?
Here.
Mr. Rowena?
Here.
Mr. Cantor?
Here.
Ms. Jordan Byron? And Mr. Schuman?
Here.
Okay.
Okay. Um, the way this is going to work this evening is the staff will make presentations on uh, the new zoning regulations and on the new map. Um, we will um, starting any at any time, folks can um, send in their questions. Once the presentation's completed, um, Steve and Brian will respond to the questions that have come in. Uh, if the commission members have questions, that's fine. I think we can just ask them. Um, however, we should not be responding as commission members to any of the questions. Um, we, it's going to be our responsibility to um, judge these rec- uh, regulations and uh, uh, the new map. And so we need to be silent regarding the questions that come in and um, I'll remind you again, but when we go to public hearing, um, as we normally do, we will not be uh, as commission members responding to um, uh, issues that the public brings up. So that we um, maintain our neutrality. Um, with that, Steve, I'll uh, turn it over to you.
Sure. Give me one sec to get a little organized here. All right. Okay, so uh, Brian and I are gonna walk you through um, just to hopefully the presentation's not too too long. I think what we're trying to do is provide just a little bit of refresher and a little bit of background and then provide you with some updates that the commission uh, has been deliberating on over the past uh, at least four months or so, maybe longer. Uh, and and just provide that for you and you know, again, as the chairman indicated, if you have specific questions or comments, you can drop them in the chat and then at the conclusion of the presentation, we'll take those. Um, and again, this is kind of a precursor to precursor to the public hearings in the fifth and the sixth. So let's get right going to it. So here's just a little bit of a refresher, uh, project.
Steve, you're still on slide four or something like that.
Yeah, that is why I don't like doing PowerPoint from work. Um, hold on one sec. I'm gonna reopen it again. Sorry. Sorry about that. Is second slide up now? Or are we on the first slide?
No, you're still on slide five.
Slide five, okay. I'll try it another way. How about that?
If you have to click on one and then start, your presentation should work.
All right, I'm gonna leave it like this. Um. How's that? You guys, is the calendar up now?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So just to kind of give everybody a refresher of where we started, um, the first real public kickoff to the entire uh, citywide update to the regulations occurred in July of two thousand twenty-one. That's quite a long time ago. There were a few hiccups along the way. Um, but a lot of it was just there, you know, this project was a big project, took a lot of work. The consultant team from the inception of the kickoff in July of twenty-one through most of two thousand twenty-two was doing a lot of analysis and learning Norwalk as well as trying to fit what we're trying to achieve with the new code into what we have reality on the ground for many of our zoning districts in our built environment. So the the draft of the regulations started to come together late two thousand twenty-two, early two thousand and twenty-three, at which time we had a public release of the documents in early April of two thousand and twenty-three. Um, between April of two thousand twenty-three through June, city staff mainly being Brian and myself went out and did a lot of public presentations and with the neighborhood groups, with the council districts, um, some of the other boards and commissions and basically anybody who asked us to come chat, we went and chatted with. Uh, those were, you know, a lot of those were in person, some virtually. The commission held two public hearings on the regulations, uh, the draft regulations back in June. We got a lot of comments. Um, you know, a lot of that was related to the upzoning and concerns around upzoning. So we went back and sharpened our pencils and have been working on changes basically from mid-June and still working on some minor things as we go forward. Um, but here we are on November twenty-first and we're looking to hold two public hearings, December fifth and sixth, which is about two weeks from now. And then the commission's gonna reconvene a week later to consider what was given for testimony uh, tho- at those two hearings, as well as everything they've been talking about for the past, you know, six to eight months and then, you know, decide on uh, next steps in course of action on potential adoption of the new regulations. Um, a little more recap and then I'll turn it over to Brian to walk you through um, some specifics, things with the zoning is uh, you know, kind of on why we're doing this is within the two thousand nineteen um, citywide plan, which is also the plan of conservation development. One of the, you know, the kind of major recommendations that came out of that was you really need to update your zoning regulations. The city hasn't undertaken a rewrite of the zoning regulations in over thirty years. Uh, the regulations as they exist today are very outdated, they're complicated. The uh, what kind of what happened over time was a very much a piecemeal approach to the regulation. So if someone came in with a proposal and you know, the city thought it was a good idea, we would end up modifying our regulations to reflect that. Um, and and it's not just, it it doesn't lead to predictable uh, development over time and it just kind of never develops a pattern and a rhythm. So we're taking the approach as best to develop a plan and then put regulations together which are consistent with that plan. Um, with that, I'll turn it over to Brian to talk a little more about that and some of the changes that we've put into the regulations.
There, so kind of building off what Steve was just saying, um, we have really four main problems with the existing regulations. Um, one is that there's just too many zones. Um, there's thirty-one as it exists today. And what that leads to is a lot of confusion on why am I in this zone? Why is this zone across the street from me? Um, there's no real flow from uh, some sort of specific development that say happens on Main Avenue versus what happens on uh, a property, a street over or a couple of streets over. So we wanted to uh, reduce the amount of zones that we have in the city again, which provides that more predictable development where you know, if you're on a major uh, corridor, that there's gonna be some more intense development going on there. And then as you get away from there, it's gonna kind of uh, lessen as you as you get further away. Um, there's lots of different uh, interpretations with uh, our existing regulations and why that is, is because there's not a lot of definitions. So you'll go through different uh, articles of the existing regulations and it'll say you can do a certain use and that use is undefined within our regulation. So uh, a person will come in and say, I want to do that use and then it's left to staff to sort of make a determination on if what they're describing fits under that use. Um, and that leads to problems where uh, if if staff interpreted interprets it one way and the applicant interprets it a different way, it opens the city up to lawsuits and appeals. So it, you know, it's better to have uh, more definitions uh, than less. Uh, the third is that uh, the current regulations, as Steve said, is they're pretty outdated, again, thirty years since we've last revised the regulations. And what that does is it makes it so we're dealing with uh, the development pressures in Norwalk of two thousand twenty-three and the future based on regulations that were written in the seventies and eighties. Um, and that, you know, maybe isn't the best way to to plan your city going forward. You know, we do these planning exercises and these, we put plans together and studies, um, and then we need to update the regulations to achieve those plans and studies. So this is kind of the the tool that we're using to achieve the the growth of the city going forward. And then more just complexity and confusion. Um, there are sections of the regulations that uh, you know, there'll be parking referenced in uh, a business zone section when and there's no cross reference to the parking section. So what happens is there's stuff that you miss. Um, you know, I, before I worked or when I first started here, there's, you know, folks who who worked for the city for, you know, over thirty years and they would often find something in the regulations that they would say, oh, I never noticed that before. And that's not a good thing. We, you know, we want to be uh, have the the regulations as concise and ref- reference you to certain sections a- as possible so that uh, everybody kind of uh, can understand what the regulations are doing. Uh, so how the proposed regulations solve these problems? Uh, so the first is uh, goodbye Euclid, hello form-based, at least sort of. Um, so the existing regulations as they exist now are called Euclidean regulations and what they, what they do is essentially say this zone, you can do commercial uses and in this zone, you can do residential uses and everything separated based on use. And what that does is it leads to a lot of sprawl, it leads to a lot of driving, it leads to a lot of traffic. And so what we want to do is go towards more of a form-based code. Um, what that does is it focuses more on what a building looks like and less of what the use that goes into that building is. And that has benefits for uh, the environment, for public health and for the economy because um, the the whole idea is that uh, with these developments, you'll be able to walk to more things that gets you out of your car uh, that you know, reduces emissions. So there's, there's, there's just benefits all around towards going towards this type of code instead of uh, Euclidean use use separation type zoning regulations. Uh, definitions, every use within the regulations uh, has a definition now. So if somebody comes in and says, I want to do this use, we could say, hold on, let's check the definition. Yes, it meets that definition or no, it doesn't. So again, lots and lots of definitions, which is, which, you know, helps make staff make better decisions. Uh, again, the simplification and the reduction of zones, we're going down from thirty-one zones down to fifteen. And again, what hopefully this does is it results in more of a cohesive development pattern where on those major corridors uh, near train stations and near jobs, uh, you you can expect to have some uh, higher intensity uh, residential uses and and commercial uses. And as you get away from it, it's kind of kind of lessen. Um, and then lots and lots of pictures. So uh, you know, sometimes a a a couple paragraphs of text. Uh, you know, you can't really accomplish what you're trying to explain. So we use pictures instead. A picture uh, again, is worth a thousand words. So here's just kind of getting into what that looks like. So for example, this is uh, uh, the formerly CD three L zone, they've uh, we'll get into kind of an update to that later. Um, but it's showing you uh, where, what the setbacks are, where a building can go, where your accessory buildings can go. Uh, impervious surface coverage, everything is very pictorial, it's put into charts, it should be hopefully easier for everybody to read and understand. Use tables. So this is something that it's not a new concept, but it's new for Norwalk. Um, every use is broken down and categorized into whether it is permitted, not permitted, it's a special permit use or it's permitted and there's additional limitations attached to that uh, allowance of it being permitted. So again, it's all broken down and and spelled out in alphabetical order. Uh, pictures of uh, different types of buildings. So this, for example, is gonna say in this zone, you can do this type of building. And what does that mean? Well, the buildings are shown. Uh, you know, a duplex is shown, this is what we expect a duplex to look like, this is what we expect townhouses to look like. So that way, everybody can kind of be on the same page to understand that in this zone, these type of buildings are allowed and this is what we sort of expect those buildings to look like. Again, this is just a close-up. So this is just, for example, a house. So this is gonna say in these zones, you can build what's described as a house and this is kind of what we expect it to look like. Um, so this is, you know, big picture changes. So these are kind of citywide goals that the the regulations are trying to accomplish. Um, what we did for showing here is a a big consolidation of uh, what is multiple zones today from ranging from Wall Street all the way down to the South Norwalk train station. Um, within that, there's the Sono Station Design District, Washington Street Design District, the South Norwalk Business District, uh, the Reed Putnam A, B, C, D, and E uh, zones. Uh, there's the Central Business District. So there's, you know, multiple zones which all try to do the same thing, which is this is where we want our most intense uh, mixed-use areas, walkability. Uh, you know, uh, people living here, people uh, having uh, shopping here, people eating here. Um, so what we did is we consolidated that all into the CD four zone because again, it's trying to accomplish the same thing uh, of being a a walkable uh, environment. Uh, big picture changes along Route one Main Avenue. So as they exist today, um, Route one is split into a Business one and a Business two zone. So if you're on the north side of uh, Connecticut Avenue, you're in the Business two zone. And if you're on the south side of Connecticut Avenue, you're in the Business one zone. Uh, Westport Avenue is all the Business two zone and then Main Avenue is the Business two zone. We combine those to be the same zone because essentially, again, they're trying to do the same thing. Um, they're gonna allow a little bit more of those larger retailers. Um, but again, they're gonna be a mixed-use area. So again, we just merged those into one, one zone.
Yeah, and and one thing I'll jump in on this one, Brian, is is one of the goals within the the citywide plan, which the new code seeks to accomplish is to ensure that Route one today doesn't look like Route one in the future, same with Main Ave. Um, there's a marked marked difference when you get to the Westport line or the Darien line of what Route one looks like. And the reason is that's because we allow our Route one to look like our Route one. So the new regulations with the form-based model will require parking not to be as visible, to be screened or at the side or the rear of the building. It will um, regulate the building types more closely. It will regulate the signage more closely. So we'll get a more cohesive pattern of develop, yeah, of development over time. Um, with the goal of these areas also becoming more walkable, um, something the city's gonna look at, you know, for the commission down the road is certain nodes of activity along the Route one corridor where we might be able to add some additional height and density. So that way it becomes less uh, less automobile-centric and a little more um, pedestrian-friendly.
And then these are more like regulatory changes that apply citywide. So going towards uh, height being regulated by number of stories uh, based on uh, when you're walking downtown, you might not recognize that a building is seventy-five feet tall, but if we told you it's six stories tall, then I think you'd get a better understanding of what that building is gonna look like. Um, regulating impervious surface coverage. So um, currently under the existing regulations, we only regulate the amount of area that you cover with buildings. Um, we don't regulate things like your parking area, at least for most zones. And that is problematic because your parking is likely impervious and that's contributing to, you know, water quality issues. So uh, we are going to regulate impervious surface coverage going forward, which is gonna be buildings, parking and things like that. Um, no longer uh, regulating FAR. FAR stands for floor area ratio. Um, essentially, it's a a metric that, you know, really is no longer applicable in most cases. We already have things that regulate buildings such as, you know, the num- the how how tall the building can be, the density on the site. Um, FAR really doesn't contribute to what a building looks like or or anything like that. So we're recommending that it no longer be uh, a regulatory standard. We're gonna regulate grading and vegetation and tree removal. Um, a lot of the time right now, uh, somebody can completely excavate or fill a yard and there's really not much that zoning can say about it as long as it complies with the DPW drainage manual. Um, so we're gonna start saying, you, there's only so much grading and filling that you can do um, and uh, the setbacks of your yard so that you're not causing water to run off onto your neighbor's property and causing issues for your neighbors. Uh, regulating lighting. Uh, so this is private lighting, this isn't, you know, streetlights really. Um, but this will be regulating lighting on your property again, so that we're not causing issues of light spilling onto your neighbor's property and keeping them up all night. Um, and then kind of like there's some design stuff, we don't want to see sort of, you know, if if a project goes in with lighting, we want to be able to control uh, one, the brightness and two, the the style of of lighting. Uh, sustainability measurements on larger projects. So um, this is something that the commission has really uh, been pushing us on, which which is good. Um, this is uh, things where we are gonna start uh, requiring uh, that projects over a certain size uh, have to meet some sort of, be certifiable as some sort of sustainable uh, uh, metric, whether that be something like passive house um, or lead. Um, these are ways to make a building more sustainable in terms of uh, its energy usage. Um, so that these projects are really being built to to today's standards and and not having a a negative impact on uh, you know, energy usage and heating and cooling and those kind of things. Uh, and other things like this is, you know, uh, requiring solar to be on roofs or green roofs or or cool roofs, things like that to kind of really hit at that uh, sustainable uh, building uh, uh, requirement. Uh, revisions to flood regulations. So uh, right now, uh, we hear a lot that uh, Norwalk has very strict uh, flood regulations in terms of uh, buildings uh, when uh, you, especially like flood budgets. So if your building is not flood compliant, you're only allowed to do uh, fifty percent worth of the the market value of the structure. Um, since the the building has, was designated as non-flood compliant. Um, and we go back to when those flood regulations were first adopted, which is back in the seventies. So that that causes uh, the the good thing that that does is it causes a lot of buildings to be raised to become flood compliant. Um, the bad thing that that does is it causes a lot of folks to um, run into that budget and then they, they aren't able to do the renovations and including minor renovations to their, to their house that they that they would like to do. So we're proposing some regulations to that to hopefully provide, to hit that middle ground. Um, still kind of push people to make their homes flood compliant, but also giving them some some budget room so that they could put a new roof on their house uh, or that they can, you know, put new siding on or or finish the bathroom, kind of things like that. Um, and then lastly is increased public notification. So um, we hear a lot about uh, you know, people wanting to push for more for more public notification for things that require public hearings or that applications have been submitted. So we buffed up uh, the the public notification requirement beyond what statutorily required, which is generally just uh, your butters. So we're doing, I think we proposed a one hundred foot radius around a property. Um, we propose uh, we have uh, signage requirements, you have to post physical signs on properties subject to public hearing. So um, kind of trying to push uh, for for more public notification all around. And then so, since we've last really discussed this uh, with the public, um, uh, which was back in June, I believe, uh, we've, we've made some tweaks based on all that public feedback we got. I think we got over four hundred comments. Uh, staff replied to each one and then the commission uh, were the ones to review what the comment was, what staff's response was, and then to kind of pick a direction on uh, what they wanted to do about that concern. So uh, one of the big changes is there's new nomenclature. So previously, uh, you can see on the the chart uh, of what the zones uh, were previously designated as and on the right is the new ones. And what we, we think about this and although it's gonna cause confusion at first is that this all makes sense uh, long-term. Um, the original zone names were based on this national model of form-based code. Uh, and that Norwalk started at the number, the numerical three designation for that uh, national model. Uh, which is why we started at three and then went to four and then went to five. Um, that caused some confusion because it's like, why, why are we starting at three? And if I don't know about the national model, then what, you know, that doesn't really, you know, make sense to me. So what we did is we renamed the zones to uh, be start at the number one. Uh, so anytime you see the number one, that's gonna mean that that's a single-family zone. Uh, the number two, CD two, uh, and again, CDs, character district or, excuse me, community district. Two, that means you could do a two-family structure there. Three is when we start doing multifamily and mixed-use. And then four is your, your downtown, that's your Wall Street down through South Norwalk areas. And anytime you see a W, that means water. So it's probably uh, a budding some sort of waterway in Norwalk, whether it's uh, the the harbor, Norwalk River or the Five Mile River. Um, and we added in a new zone. So uh, you know, based on uh, the uh, the public comment that there's too much upzoning, um, scale it back. Uh, we did a a massive amount of scaling it back. Um, so with that, we'll be added back in a new zone. And what the new zone is, is a single-family zone uh, that pretty much replicates the existing B-residence zone. Uh, it would be called the CD one S. So this caused, so uh, you know, the, your triple-A zone today would become the CD one L. Uh, your A and double A becomes the CD one M, M for medium, L for large, and then your CD one S, uh, S for small is your B-residence zone. Um, and then here's kind of some more uh, stuff that we've been doing. Um, this is in terms of new uses or new limitations that have been proposed and and added in. Um, so uh, we, we added back in minimum lot sizes for the the single-family zones uh, or the the strictly residential zones. Uh, so those would uh, closely uh, replicate what exists today. Um, we came up with a a neighborhood retail use or sort of like a corner store concept for our residential zones. Uh, they'd be permitted via special permit. Um, and what that would do is uh, you know, all around the city, there's you, the these neighborhood retail uses who, that have kind of been there is probably predating zoning. Um, and people really like them. They're really cool. You can walk to a deli that's down the street from your house. Um, pick up a cup of coffee or anything like that. So the uh, we, we discussed it and thought that that would be a really cool concept to reintroduce and allow uh, under uh, certain circumstances. Uh, a a big uh, increase in the amount of marine and water-dependent uses. So uh, we had the marine commercial zone uh, and not only has that increased in area, but uh, the CD three W and the CD four W, which are also uh, mixed-use zones that abut the water. Um, we've allowed all of those marine and water-dependent uses in those zones to really try to get those uh, uses incentivized and and utilized to to make, you know, use of of the water in Norwalk. Um, the sustainability requirements, I kind of hit on this a little bit earlier, but requiring projects over a certain size uh, to be certifiable and under certain um, uh, requirements, again, whether it's, you know, there's all different uh, uh, organizations that have standards. So passive house uh, lead. And again, these are, these are actually, these are very strict, you know, it's not easy to achieve these. So that's why we're, we're kind of excited about this and hoping that um, you know, it results in really sustainable structures going forward. Um, edits to uh, some uses such as bed and breakfasts and group homes. Um, so these are group homes, there's statutory language that we need to comply with. So uh, we're really just trying to make sure that we're complying with all our requirements uh, statutorily. Uh, bed and breakfasts became a special permit use and uh, throughout the city. So there's uh, so I I believe there's additional limitations attached to them. So anytime a bed and breakfast is proposed, um, it would come to the commission, it'd have a public hearing. Uh, so so those would be more closely regulated. And that is not Airbnb's, that's a completely separate thing. Uh, this is your traditional B and B. Um, and then we added some new uses based on some feedbacks of development park. This would be uh, sort of what is proposed to happen up at uh, North Seven uh, on Glover Avenue. Um, so that uh, there's more assurance there that, you know, the commission went through this approval process uh, with those folks and we're just kind of codifying it within uh, the the regulations going forward. Uh, robot competition venue, this is kind of a cool one that um, is currently going on down in South Norwalk. There's actually this robot competition use. They, they have fighting robots and it uh, attracts a lot of people and it's uh, STEM-oriented and it's, it's something that is unique to Norwalk. So we wanted to make sure that the folks who are doing that can continue doing that and hopefully grow and thrive in Norwalk because that's definitely something that um, people from all over come here just to see. And then sports courts, um, this is something that's come up as an issue as in terms of enforcement for the city. Uh, so we've, we've added in this definition for sports courts. So if you're, you know, a residential property owner and you want to put in um, a large volleyball court for whatever reason in your backyard, that we would uh, regulate that much more intensely. It would be a special permit requirement. Um, so that uh, you know, you'd have to come and explain why you need, you know, a a regulation-sized volleyball court in your backyard. And then some updates to limitations. So uh, you know, retail, personal service, restaurant uses. Um, we want to make sure that the CD three and CD three W zones, which are kind of your neighborhood business uh, formerly D-residence zone. So it's multifamily. We want to make sure that the the uses that go on there and the mixed, the the commercial uses that go on are more of your uh, mom-and-pop shop, smaller-scale uh, commercial uses. We don't, you know, really want uh, not, not to pick on like a CVS, but like a CVS to open up in these areas. Um, again, it's supposed to kind of be like a local uh, restaurant, local retailer, things like that. Um, location, uh, of specific building type. So this is Location uh of specific building type. So this is uh for. Really our major uh arterials. We want to see uh our major streets. We want to see mixed use. Buildings go on. So we want to see like a first floor commercial use. And then above that, you do your residential uh units on top. Uh, that activates the first floor area, gets people walking, gets uh, you know, kind of eyes on the street or, you know, really looks like things are going on in the area. So. We specified things like that. So uh, again, your strictly multifamily would be. On the collector streets or the local streets that are allowed in that zone. And your your your, you know, more major streets would be a a mixed use building type. Uh, warehousing only. So um, as previously proposed. The warehouse use was uh. Included uh warehousing, storage and wholesale distribution facilities. Um, so we clarified that to say it's just warehousing. It's not storage and it's not wholesale distribution facilities. So um. Wholesale wholesale distribution facilities would not be allowed in the city. And then storage, this isn't really self-storage. Self-storage is regulated under a different uh use. So this is uh. Just just to clarify that. And then recycling operations. Um, this is more specific to to Le Joy's and kind of what 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 they do in terms of uh. Uh, recycling uh old cars. Or eh eh so we've eh added in some clarifying language that allows them to modernize uh. For, you know, the future, especially as E Vs become more popular and incentivized. Um, to allow them to continue operating uh to to meet those needs. Uh, so here's the proposed map as updated or as currently proposed on the left-hand side. Uh, I I'd recommend going on the website and kind of taking a look and seeing uh where your property is and what the proposed zone is, but it should. Closely match up with probably what um is is allowed today. The map on the right shows areas that are. Uh, still proposed to be upzoned. Um, I believe the the yellow would be uh. Areas that are going from single family to allow for two-family residences. Orange are areas uh where two families allow today going to mixed use. So going up to that that next step of development being allowed. And then the blue are areas that are currently uh single family that are going up also to that mixed use. So that's kind of like a two, two-step increment in development. And here's some blowups on those areas. So we have the the Heathcote neighborhood, which is directly it debuts Wilton. It's directly off Main Avenue and it's kind of surrounded by. Condos. So, you know, kind of the thought was it's if it's in proc such close proximity to Main Avenue. It's surrounded by condos. It kind of makes sense that condos should be allowed to go in there. The middle map is Main Avenue and New Canaan Avenue. So you can kind of see some of the neighborhoods again, the yellow. Um, that's kind of as you start to get off New Canaan Avenue and up towards Silvermine. Little neighborhood there going from single to to two-family for uh allowed density. And again, that's because New Canaan Avenue, as it is now, allows for multifamily and then uh. The street immediately to the north of that yellow area allows for two-family housing. So it kind of makes sense to allow it there too. Uh, and then off Main Avenue on that middle map, uh, those are areas that there's a lot of. Uh, two-family, multifamily uses in there today. Um, so we're kind of bringing that back to to allowing uses uh that are currently existing there. And then hospital, uh. Go back once, yeah, the the Hospital Hill area. Um, this is largely because it's. So proximate to Route One in the hospital. There's lots of jobs. There's lots of commercial uses going on there. So we're kind of kind of trying to do is incentivize more development to happen. Um, so that people can live near the hospital and work there. Um, and that people can start to kind of walk to more uh. Commercial uses in the area, whether it's again, you know, small corner store. Place to get your hair done, things, things kind of like that. Um, and then the last three areas really so it's kind of South Norwalk and a little bit to the west of South Norwalk. Um, again, areas of going from uh. In orange are going from two-family to allow uh mixed use so that kind of next step up in in density. Uh, the yellow area in the top left-hand corner, which are like your avenue A B, I think it's A through E. That used to be zoned as two-family at some point in its history. It got um downzoned to single family and there's a lot of duplexes there today. So we're kind of bringing that back to what it it formerly was. Um, and bringing all those houses uh back into compliance with the regulations. Um, and then there's some kind of like those. Uh, lower left-hand corner ones. Uh, those are all a budding. Uh, two-family zone. You have to like drive through a two-family zone to get there. So it kind of makes sense to to group those in as well. East Norwalk um in the middle. Um, so we have uh some areas that again are surrounded by two-family zoning or you have to drive through. Uh, two-family neighborhoods to get to it. So we kind of said, uh, why don't we just make the whole street zone the same? It provides for that more continuous uh uh development as you, you know, go from one side of the, one end of the street to the other. It's all kind of the same. Um, and then same for Cottage Street. So Cottage Street currently allows for two-family housing today. It's the C residence zone. We're proposing to bring it um. Up to the next step. So mixed use zoning. There's a lot of multifamily in there today. So it kind of brings all those properties back into compliance with the regulations. And then lastly, we have the Wolf Pit areas where Dreamy Hollow is right off of Westport Avenue. A lot of these properties today, there there's own single family, but there are a lot of apartment buildings in there today. There's lots of condos in there today. Um, so we propose to bring it back into that mixed use multifamily zone to to bring those back into com- uh, compliance with the regulations.
And so the, and again, this this may be. Old information to folks, but I figured that there are probably some. People that are just kind of tuning into what's going on now. So we wanted to uh just provide. Some information on how people can. See the new regulations in MAP if they haven't already. So there are hard copies of the regulations in MAP available at the Planning and Zoning Office at City Hall. You can also view them at the Town Clerk. Uh, tomorrow they will be at the Norwalk Public Library and the South Norwalk Public Library. So there, you know, a couple of different areas and. Make it a little easier for people to not have to, you know, either drive or other areas they may be already going. More. I think maybe a little more convenient. If you don't want to go out at all. The, you know, the simplest way that I always find stuff like this is I just open up a browser like Google. I type in city of Norwalk, um, planning and zoning. Make sure, you know, if you're not accustomed to doing that, you put in Connecticut at the end because it may take you to Norwalk, California or other places. What will happen next? If you get onto that page, it will bring you to. The Planning and Zoning webpage for the city of Norwalk. And there are two ways to click on the regulations. One is through the second tab on the left, which says zoning regulations update. Or you can just click on this tab here, which is the, you know, big banner, regulations for our future. If you click that. It will take you to this landing page, which um kind of gives a little bit of an introduction to um. You know, what we're doing and why, which a lot of stuff we've been talking about tonight. If you scroll further down the page, these are the individual articles uh that have the edits that the commission's been discussing for the last five or six months. So you would. Click on that, which I'll show you in a second, and it will um. You know, bring up what the edit is. And there's also another way you can look at those edits, which I think is a little easier for a lot of folks. One thing I want to point out that. There is a separate use table. That use table is contained within Article Four. Article Four is the. Big article that has all the information related specifically to the zones, which Brian was showing you earlier, which has all the building types. The use table, the parking requirements, how big the buildings be can be and all those things. There were a couple errors that one of our residents kindly pointed out to us. So we took the use table down for today. We should have it back up by tomorrow afternoon to show the the corrections. So we apologize for. Any confusion that was there. But if you clicked on one of the articles, say you wanted to click on Article Four to look at what some of the changes were. You would see something like this. So there would be, uh, looking at number three here, you would see this red crossed out text. And then on the right side of the page, you'll see what the change that the staff and the commission has agreed to. To put in the regulations. I think there's actually an easier way to do that because. The the zoning regulations in draft form, even though we tried to make them simpler compared to what we have today. It's still a very large document. So you're going to be doing a lot of page surfing just to look for the edits. So a simpler way to do that would be to. Um, at the bottom of the page. So again, on this little picture here, that's the the landing page for those zoning regulations update site. Down towards the bottom of that page, there is something called the Regulations Edits Table. If you click on that table, it pops up an Excel spreadsheet and the the Excel spreadsheet shows you uh the page number, the article number. What the question or concern that was raised either by someone from the public. Or staff or the commission as we, anybody was reviewing the document. It would have a staff recommendation on whether to make a change, to not make a change. Um, and some rationale behind either decision. And then the last column is basically uh affirmation from the commission that they said, yes, make the change or change it in this manner. So. I think that's an easier way to see the uh individual changes. And if you wanted to get further clarification, then you could dive back into the full article to look for those. Also, at the bottom of this page, I have a couple other areas. Circled on here just for um educational purposes. Above that. This should be um the letters that were individual letters that were submitted to the commission as part of this. And this link here, which isn't circled, but this is the. Table that Brian was referring to, which has all the public comments that have come in. Um, I'd say eighty percent of those have come in through the the website we set up that has the comment. Um, link that's still live and will remain live through the close of the public hearing. But we've also put in the emails and kind of copy and paste them in there. And so we have responses to that. There's probably a few more responses I've gotten in. Uh, today and yesterday that we haven't gotten to, but we'll get to those next week and and get those posted. And again, that will be live through the close of the public hearing. And the bottom link here contains all the um staff memorandums in some, a couple of other commission um. Sister agencies of the city letters that have come in as well. But what we did was um staff memos in response to a lot of the more. Complicated and and intricated intricate uh comments that we received. And we we thought it was just better to put everything in a memo and try to outline the entire issue. Um, there's a lot there, lots to digest. The commission is, I think, entirely sick of uh receiving them from us, but I think they they serve their purpose in terms of. Laying out the information in a hopefully clear um in concise manner. So again, just to kind of reiterate next steps, oops, sorry about that. Next steps, um. So tonight we're just kind of providing an overview on on where we were. What the changes have been since the commission's been discussing this and where we're going. So. December fifth and sixth at six P M, there'll be uh public hearings. They will be hybrid, so you can come in person to the community room. We start at six P M. I I think there'll be, I'll, you know. I'll leave it up to the commission to say who's coming, but I I suspect that will be uh commission members present. You will also be able to participate uh via Zoom. Um, one thing I didn't think of until I just started talking, if there isn't Clement weather and City Hall had to close. Uh, I'll have to come up with the answer to that, but I think we could still proceed via Zoom at that point and then, you know, move on to the. You know, one of the other nights if we had to. And then the commission intends at this point to. Deliberate um the following week on probably the twelfth and the thirteenth. At this point in time, that probably will be a hybrid format as well, where we shift into the. Council chambers versus the community room where they can deliberate. The public is obviously welcome to attend and listen in, but there would not be. Any additional public comment at that point, assuming that the hearing closes on the sixth. With that, I thank you for your time. If you need to contact um Brian or myself, our email addresses are here. All the cities P and Z staff emails are on the uh P and Z department page. So you can obviously reach out to us through that. And I, there's a couple, looks like there's a couple. Comments in the chat, which we can get to. And obviously, anybody from the public. Who hasn't uh provided a written question or comment, you can do so with the little chat uh button at the bottom. Center of your screen to the left of the. Like should be left center, I guess. It's on my screen that way.
Can I make a couple points of clarity briefly, please?
Sure.
Yeah, thanks. I was trying to put myself in the head of someone who didn't ever, never saw this before. And what they were listening to. You know, not not with my knowledge, but with somebody who is new, was new to it. So Brian, when you showed the picture of the house in the form-based housing. You had said this is what we wanted to look like. It sounded like you were saying that we were going to actually regulate. Architecture and what we're. To be clear, what we're regulating is the shape and size and. Uh, dormers are welcomed uh and encouraged, but you're not actually regulating. We're not uh regulating architecture. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's a good point, Mr. Mueschek. So um, the, when I put in form-based kind of uh or sort of. Um, so the form-based only applies to our mixed use zones. So uh in the commercial and mixed use zones, we we will have a say in sort of what the buildings look like in terms of what the building materials are, the siding. The the glazing, things like that. Um, but for your strictly residential zone, so your single own, single family only and two-family zones. Um, we we're not going to tell you what your house has to look like. So you are right.
And and that one, and the images that are shown are uh meant as examples only, not as it has to look exactly like this.
Correct.
And uh, so that one, it just make that clear. And the other one was the um. When you mentioned tree removal, we're going to regulate tree removal. I I think that sounded like we were going to have, you know, a sort of traditional tree ordinance, which we. Do have a tree ordinance now, but it only deals with commercial properties, not private properties. And um, you know, and the council passed that a few years ago, but. Uh, it sounded like we were going to regulate tree removal. And it wasn't clear, and I want to make it clear that that's for a permit. Uh, either a zoning permit, a building permit, when someone comes in. Uh, you'll be regulating tree removal, but if somebody wants to cut a tree down on the property. You're not going to be regulating that uh with these uh regulations.
Right. So it's only at scale. So like, if you're going to like clear cut, I can't remember the square footage off the top of my head. I think it's something like five thousand square feet. So if you're in a, you have a lot. That's uh wooded and you need to. Cut down a lot of trees in order to to build a house. Uh, you are going to be required to go through some additional steps in in order to do so.
Yeah, and that that's um, yeah, it it's a good point. It's not meant to say you can't cut down a tree. Uh, you know, obviously if someone's got a tree that's. Threatening their house, you know, it's not intended to do that. It's it's meant to deal with um potential. Uh, vegetation removal or clear cutting on a larger scale, not done so. In conjunction with a building permit. So it'd be like if if you had like a two-acre lot, for example, and you're, you decide. I have an acre of woods and I'm all of a sudden going to clear it so I can have a better view of something. We would say, wait a minute, you need to obtain permits or, you know, we want to make sure that you're not causing a. Grading problem, a drainage problem, um flooding impacts on your neighbors, those kind of things.
Sure, great. Thanks. Uh, thank you for that clarity. And a good, a good presentation, I thought.
So so, Mr. Chairman, we can read off the questions from the chat and provide answers, if that's okay with you.
I think that's the way we anticipated this would go. Sure.
Sure. So the first question is from Tanner Thompson. Asking if there'll be a divi- digital version of the regulations that has hyperlinks between terms and definitions. The answer is no and yes. So the initial draft that comes out is going to have very limited hyperlinks. That was something that we. Thought of after we started, um, we put our budget together. Uh, and so what we're going to do, the initial draft will not, but. What we're going to do is fix that. Once it's uh in-house, we'll go back and painstakingly go through and. Put the hyperlinks in to make sure it matches up. Um, it's a great tool. I wish I would have thought of it when we budgeted. We would have put that in from the beginning. But we definitely will get that done. It will just won't be done um right away. So I, that's my bad. Sorry about that. Second question is um from Diane C C. My screen's moving around. What is the fee to get a hard copy of the regulations in MAP? Oh, that's a really good question. Let me think about that. I. You know. We have a standard fee for existing zoning regulations. Um, we tend to try to discourage printing of the zoning regulations because it's such a big document. It's a lot of paper. Let me, let me think about that. I'll have to try to do something. If I could do something on a shared use between groups or something, I could accommodate that. But yeah, it's a big document. Next question from John Pinto. Do the new zoning regulations recognize and support Norwalk's municipal coastal program? Which was prepared pursuant to the Connecticut Coastal Management Act. Uh, I would say, yes, I'm not sure why it. Doesn't, Brian, do you have any other? I would say, yes, I'm not sure why it doesn't. Brian, do you have any other thoughts on that?
Yeah, so you know, the coastal management program or municipal coastal program in Norwalk was adopted probably, I think, going back in the early eighties. So, you know, what our regulations sort of are getting at is, one, it's reducing impervious surface coverage or at least regulating it. So that's going to have beneficial impacts on water quality. It's going to require public access along water. So that's one of the the water dependent use per the CAM Act. So there's increasing that public access. And then there's just the overall increase in the amount of land area dedicated, or at least where water dependent uses are allowed. So that's again, the increase in marine commercial zoning. And then the mixed use zoning that's abutting the water would also allow for water dependent uses. And again, especially in the Upper Harbor, which is currently zoned as heavy industrial. I mean, that could have serious negative impacts on water quality. So we're posing to to take some of that out. So that's going to have good benefits to to water quality throughout throughout Norwalk.
Sure. And there's three additional questions, but they're all related to timing of the hearing or close of the hearing, providing additional comments and potential extension of time for deliberation by the commission. So I think it, you know, that I don't want to speak for the chair of the commission, but the the intent would be to close the hearing for comment on the the sixth, obviously, if there's unique circumstances that require additional time, that I'm sure the commission will consider that. The the and next one to Miss Larchella. The 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 documents themselves have been posted for quite a while. They haven't was I can't remember the exact day. I can probably figure that out, but the the document was the edits has been up for quite a while now. So there's been a long time for folks to digest what's been changed and what's been proposed. To be honest, there are a few things that are still being worked out, specifically related to the sustainability elements, also related to the E V T Z criteria in East Norwalk. So we're still playing around with some of those things, but by and large, the the you know, ninety percent of the regulations have been relatively unchanged. The one, you know, significant change which Brian went through was the was the nomenclature change. So I know that's takes a little bit to, you know, get used to, but it doesn't have any kind of impact in terms of uses, density, heights, or any of the, you know, none of that's changed. It actually brings things back closer to what the current regulations are, particularly related to the single family zone. So I think it's shows overall that it's less impactful. And that also, I guess, you know, again, to Miss C C's question, yeah, I mean, it's up to the commission. If they they get to the fifth or sixth and they feel they need more time, they'll make an adjustment. If they get to the twelfth and thirteenth and feel they need more time, they'll also you know, evaluate the schedule at that point in time to see see where they're at. Last question I see posted from Jennifer Butler. How will zoning treat building projects that are already in process? That's a great question. So the this state statute, which is mimicked in our regulations today, is that if anybody submits an application prior to the effective date of the regulation. So right now, we're working off of a premise that the new regulations will be effective on February first of twenty twenty four. So if somebody submits an application on January fifteenth, that it would fall under the current regulations. So for P and Z staff and the commission, they're going to have a couple of months where they're juggling two sets of regulations. So you technically could have a meeting where they're looking at regulation, one application under the old regulations and another application under the new regulations. That's entirely possible. I think folks, whether they're homeowners or they're developers, they're going to have to weigh which set of regulations is more appropriate for their project and which one is more advantageous. I think what we're the the what we've heard from our consultant is based on the edits to date that they can turn the edits around by the end of December. So what we want is a little time to A, check everything, because, you know, I think there's going to be some missteps, like I pointed out with the use table. So we want to go through and make sure they didn't miss anything. And this also gives us a few weeks to print out copies, start talking internally with the, you know, from my end, the 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 front counter zoning staff is going to be the ones that bear the initial brunt of this. So they're going to get applications. We have to provide, you know, we're going to need new permit forms. They're going to be looking at things like grading, lighting, things that they have not regulated in the past. So there's a little bit of a learning curve for some folks. So I want to be able to guide them on that and and make sure you know, we're not missing anything. So that 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 takes some time. So we're actually thinking about that and talking about that now, but it all all takes a little time. Uh, next question from Mr. Pinto. Is P and Z working with the new owner of Manresa Island to provide development of two hundred residential units? P and Z staff has spoken with the new owner and their development team several times about some things. We anticipate they may request to have some zoning language incorporated into the new text on things. It will not be a application, though. So I want to point this out to make it clear for the record. It will be text very similar to what we saw with North Seven, where it could be allowing the submittal at a later date of a master plan. So it allow it kind of will be a placeholder of what they could do. It will not be what they are doing. So I just want to put that distinction out there. What next question from Miss C C? Is the feedback from the stakeholder groups that you met with in person or Zoom available on the public comments table, in particular, chamber and major developers? That's a good question. If we did a PowerPoint presentation for any of those groups. I know the chamber, I thought we did one for them. It's been a while, so I'd have to go back and look. That would have been posted, especially if it was any kind of virtual meeting, we recorded it. Any feedback with the major developers? No, that was more kind of, you know, we had conversations and meetings with them like I would if they were doing a development project. What we did do with all those folks was, for the most part, we had them put their comments in writing. So there was a record of it. So I know there are several comments, and a lot of those comments were related to things going on in the new C D four zone, which is the urban core zone. They basically what those boiled down to were they they started taking the new regulations and designing their projects around that. And then they said, hey, did you guys look at this? This is not going to work, or this is going to be a problem. And so the commission made several technical tweaks related to that. A couple I can name off the top of my head were like a minimum lot width in the zone. Setbacks for certain things. We actually increased the setback a little bit in the front yard to allow for more active or landscape space in the front setback. We also looked at some different things with articulation of building facade. And to be honest with you, they caught a few things that we left out by accident, and we put those back in, such as requiring upper story setbacks in those zones. So that was kind of the 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 crux of their process. You know, obviously, I think it's fair to say that they would have preferred if we up the density and up the height in all those zones, but we did not. We kept that pretty steady for the most part. Miss C C, again, does this require simple majority vote to pass? I think it does. Brian, do you remember? I'll look if if I don't know.
So for so text, so it's well, depends on harbor commission's vote that that impacts it and their finding. And then so essentially, it's a most text changes, it's a simple, it's a majority, simple majority of voting of all seated members. So like the entire nine members of the commission, it would need five affirmative votes to to pass.
Okay. Miss Larchella, so longer ones who bear with me. Sustainability, drinking water, that kind of two topics. About twenty percent, twenty-two percent of Norwalk residents are served by private groundwater in the form of individual drinking wells. I would like to see something like an overlay drinking water conservation zone to preserve the opportunity to protect and use groundwater, especially to reduce overuse when droughts are a threat due to climate change. Is there anything in our regs in residential zones to highlight this? No. No, I there's not presently. I think, you know, it should be pointed out to let's say the commission goes ahead and and adopts the new regulations and they're effective February one. This is not the end of the rewrite story. I I know the commission members are not thrilled to hear that, but I fully anticipate that six months into this and twelve months into this, and maybe even two years into this, we're going to be still making changes. Some of these things that we're implementing, they may not work. Some of them may have unintended consequences. Some things may just may need correction. So if you have an idea, something like this, we're happy to take a look at it. If you can come find an example of where this has been done in another community and how it was applied. We're happy to evaluate it. I would say it's probably a little late in the game to include something like this at this juncture. But it's, again, it doesn't mean we can't revisit it. You know, six months from now. Also, the city is also doing a lot of climate action planning. So that's, you know, an item that makes sense to get, you know, initially discussed there and then incorporated down the road into regulate, regulation changes by the city. Here is, it's a here is a comment from Lisa Wilson Grant. Thank you for everyone to do the right thing for Norwalk and to be sure our infrastructure is not stressed, nor our schools. I I think the infrastructure items have been addressed previously. I I'm not sure if anybody commission wants me to expand further on that, but I don't think we need to. Do think from Diane C C, do state statutes allow you to modify thirteen special permit standards? Yes, because they're this state statutes provide guidance on what you can review as part of special permits. We're actually, you know, one of the things, as I mentioned earlier, that's kind of still being floated and discussed is the whole idea of sustainability on larger projects and what we can require for sustainable measures. A big topic of conversation was making these buildings and projects as energy efficient as possible. The state statutory language allows the city to regulate these items somewhat, but they provide zero guidance on what the bounds are. And, you know, the 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 state has indicated that energy consumption and energy uses is best left to the building code. So we're trying to structure a special permit requirement, which also probably would be applicable to site plan applications that would, in a way, require some sort of more energy efficient design, but we're just not quite sure how it all shakes out at this point. Need a sip of water. Uh, this one is from Diane Keith. Do the new standards provide flexibility to convert commercial buildings into residential, acknowledging high vacancy rates in buildings post pandemic and how some owners may want to repurpose them? Yes, I think they do. So most of the regulations now require or don't require change in use. Don't like if you're going to internally convert a building, it does not require anything beyond what's already permitted and required in the zone. So so long as the parking requirement for residential is less than, say, office space, that conversion should be fairly painless. It's important to point out, we've had have had conversations with some of the office owners about this issue and the way some of the older office buildings were constructed. It's not an easy conversion to residential. It's you know, from what they're telling us, you know, they're and we've asked them to kind of quantify and and lay that out, why this is the case, because, you know, I'm not an I'm not an architect or an engineer, so I can't verify this, but they're telling us that it's actually cheaper to construct new verse worse verse internally converting the building. Now, from a sustainability standpoint, we would argue that it's more sustainable to use the existing building and then convert it. But, you know, they're saying to us that the cost is prohibitive. So we asked them to provide us, you know, the answers as to why that is. Yes, the answer that Miss Keith had a follow up question. If owners want to demolish and rebuild, do these regs require a new permit for residential? Yes, they would. So if, you know, somebody had one of the office towers, I'm going to use an example up at Merit Seven, for example, and they wanted to knock that down and rebuild, they would have to come back in. Depending on the size and the scale, that could very well be a special permit application, or at the very least would be a site plan application. But either of those would, you know, probably trigger new traffic studies, would trigger all kinds of new regulation regulation conformities at that point. I think I've caught up to him, Mr. Chairman, for the moment.
Okay. A lot of good questions. If there, oh, you've got another one, I think.
Yeah, no problem. Miss Larchella, again, sustainability is the topic. Did staffer commissioners contact and meet with? I think that's deep, but and on my glasses on, oh, no, sorry, that's neep. The Northeast Energy Partnership for Free Professional Advice About How to Add More Renewable Energy Opportunities. She said she suggested that a while ago, focused on solar is limiting. No, we did not. Just didn't have an opportunity to do so. I think there the regulations, though, the direction we're going has in terms of the site plan or special permit criteria has gone well beyond solar, I would say, in terms of some of the things we're kicking around at the moment.
Yeah, I think to go further to we we chatted with some other neighboring towns. We chatted with Bridgeport, New Haven and Stanford, kind of like on sustainability stuff that they're doing. I think from what we've proposed with the kind of the direction that the commission has guided us in going, they're all kind of really excited based on what we've proposed in terms of requiring for larger projects that are special permit or site plan review to produce either seventy-five percent of their energy onsite or to make their building certifiable under, again, passive house, lead gold or or some of the other certifications. So I would say that we're definitely pushing the envelope in terms of what we're allowed to require. So again, speaking with the other communities, I think they're excited to see and and hopeful that what we're proposing works out for the best.
Is that another question?
Asking about applying, requiring sustainability goals on residential for a single family residential, for example. I think that's a broader topic than we're going to be able to handle as part of the current rewrite. I don't know. I don't know if we can, but that's another question for a little bit.
Yeah, there's definitely some conflict in between what we can ask for and what we can require in terms of conflicting with the building code. So if the building code kind of lets folks build a building a certain way, the Office of Legislative Research kind of said that zoning can't mandate something else. So it's kind of why.
Miss C C had a comment about for to see basically looking, asking more related to the continuance to move it, move things back, you know, I I mean, I will say, you know, some of the comments we've received, you know, were initially like topic areas that could have been brought up, I would say, many, many, many months ago. Irregardless of the current version of the draft. So we're, you know, we're doing our best to respond to things. I think we've gotten many of the things. You know, specifically with the removal of much of the upzoning. I think what's in front of folks now is you know, pretty, pretty on par with what the current regulations allow for the single family and the two family. Brian went through the slides related to the upzoning. I think that, you know, what what still remains, I think it's it's a much smaller area. So I think it's pretty straightforward on what's allowed there and what's required there. The other edits, for the most part, which you can go through, you know, and look at those are related to by and large, related to very technical issues in in some of the more dense zones. And then the ones, like I said, are More dense zones. And then the ones, like I said, are still in flux related to sustainability. But it's not a new topic. It's a refinement of ideas we've been talking about for over three months now. How many residents are on the Zoom? Is it twenty? I think it was like twenty six at the high point. It's like twenty four now, what it looks like. Diane Lurcella, many great changes there, but can you please highlight any requirements about building orientation? We did have that in particular when we were talking about some changes along the marine commercial zone, which we've since. Decided to put on hold. I can tell you that I don't think there are any in terms of. There may be some language when it talks about some solar, trying to maximize orientation to, you know, achieve the highest and and best capture for that.
Yeah, like, yes, particularly like when we're requiring you to put solar on your structure. You're going to have to orient the building to be, you know, as south facing as possible. So they're going to have to. They're going to have to look at the reg and say, the reg says we have to put solar on it, therefore it makes sense for us to. Have our our roof be south facing.
Yeah, and and nothing to the geothermal. We didn't have anything in there about that. If, I mean, that's something I I'm. Not as familiar with why the geothermal would need to be orientated a certain way, but I can take a peek at that.
Yeah, and that I think still falls under that certifiable requirement where. It's going to give them discretion on sort of how to orient the building in order to. Satisfactorily achieve that ability to certify as passive house or any of the other ones that we've listed. So it's kind of, it gets them to do it, but gives them some discretion on how to get there.
Mr. Chella again, I do not see relationship to ground mounted or. Canopy solar, we need this added. Can can you rephrase that? Because I'm not sure what you're actually.
Yeah, we we have the requirement for, yeah, for the, it is in there for, so if you're proposing a massive parking lot or a parking. Do need to put a solar canopy on top of it. So, you know, when we were dealing with legments, they were. Nice enough to agree to the commission's requirement to put a solar canopy up. So now the regulations are actually going to say going forward, you you have to do it. So there's no more discretion involved. It's a mandatory requirement.
Yeah, and it should be pointed out that the number, the the. The threshold, what triggers that is still under discussion. That's something. Brian and I'll get the commission next week. You had asked for some kind of like. Building scale. Images and things you could look at. So we'll pull out some Norwalk. Buildings that you're familiar with, so you can kind of get a comparison of. What's the square footage of this building? What's the footprint of this building? So you have an idea of what the, what kind of. Scale of projects we're talking about. Diane Cece, many communities nationally have codified developer public outreach. To ensure. Appropriate levels based on location, size, impact. Can this be considered during the rewrite? Happy to submit proposed outreach matrix. I'm going to read that again myself, just so I understand that was asking. I I, yeah, you'll have to send me something on that. I've not.
I think she's getting at the public, like, notification, I think, so.
Yeah, Diane, feel free to follow up if you'd like. So Ms. Lisa Wilson Grant is asking what the commissioners think about this, so that. As the chairman indicated earlier, this is not the the forum for that, so that that it's really meant for staff to. Provide overview and 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 some answer questions for folks. The commission will be deliberating post, post public hearing. Rich Bonifant, if a private boat club or marina business wants to do a major repair to a bulkhead, for example. Would they now be required to provide public access to the water?
No, no, that's, so that's specific to. Redevelopments and it would only be redevelopments in those mixed use zones, so like the C D four W, for example. So if they were to take a existing law and say, we're going to put up a multifamily mixed use structure here, we would say, okay, well, then you need to put in. Public access along the rear, so that the public can get back there. But if you have a marine use and they're. Repairing a bulkhead or doing any work and it's the same, same thing. One, the marine commercial zone, I don't believe is subject to the water. Public access requirement, probably because they're doing some things that is a little bit dangerous for the public to be. Near and two, it's it's not a new development, so they would not be subject to that.
And Diane Cece just verified, relate, it is related to public notification. So, yeah, if you have something forwarded on and we can review. We did, and I think Brian had pointed out during the presentation that. There are more requirements now. For public notice related to certain types of applications that will, you know, pop up.
If we want to do like a last call for questions.
Yeah, you spoke too soon. Yes, the regulations do allow for ground mount to solar ray. There was something that we got a couple of comments about that. The consultant had put in a requirement that it had to be a six foot fence around the. Around a ground mounted array. I don't know if we ever settled on should that come out, not come out. I think probably our position was if that's what the building code requires, we would let the building code requirement require it and then. Not have P and Z regulated. So, yeah, I think that's the only kind of open issue with that.
Last call.
And and even if you think of something later, feel free to email Brian anytime.
Yeah, the CC that, yeah, so this was referred to West Cog. It was referred to all the surrounding towns. It was referred to the Connecticut Department of Health. Was referred to the Harbor Commission. It was referred to the Five Mile River Commission. Who am I forgetting?
We actually got, we got West Cod comments back to this afternoon, so we'll. They'll get posted probably. I don't know if they'll get posted tomorrow, but we'll post them. Post them, I think, by Monday and then we'll forward it out to the commission as well.
Yeah, and I think the only other two were first. First District Water and SNU. So everyone who we required to. We referred it to and the Westport comments. If I haven't posted them already, yes, I can post those.
DOT, no. Do you, sorry, I should read the question. Diane was asking whether DOT comments, no, we don't refer the. Not required to refer to DOT. I'm not sure who we would refer to in DOT to be honest, there's so many branches of DOT and it would be a little tricky.
Okay, then let's, let's call this and. Just move on. We don't have very much more business, but let's move on to comments of director.
I just want to say thank you to all the commissioners for putting up with Brian and myself, more so me since June. And you've been under a lot of. I, you know, probably a little bit more than anybody anticipated or signed up for. So I. I'm really appreciative of the time you guys have put in and just want to thank you and wish you all a happy Thanksgiving.
Comments of commissioners?
I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
I just, again, want to remind everyone of. The the upcoming meetings, the public hearings on December fifth and December sixth. Steve, I, we're trying to encourage as many commissioners to come to that. Live as possible. Although I understand for at least one and maybe some others, that's not it. You'll have to zoom if you can attend. But to encourage everyone, Steve will be providing dinner. So if you want to get there a few minutes earlier, have some dinners, some. Non zoning conversation. That that would be lovely.
Oh, could be me in Florida.
Grubhub.
He Galen?
Okay, I'll learn from Grubhub and, you know.
Anna has a question.
Sure, go ahead, Anna.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you so much for. Doing this separate presentation and advance of the public hearing and for turning on the Q and A feature, which I know is new for us. I wish, you know, we'd had even more public participation. It's hard the week of Thanksgiving, but. I think it went well. I think there's things we can improve, but I I'm glad to see that happen. So thank you. And thank you in advance for dinner, Steve. I do have a babysitter for both nights at the public hearing right now, so I'm looking forward to that. I wanted to ask Steve if there's an update on the conversations on residential parking permits for East Morlock specifically, if we're gonna. Be able to have somebody from T M P join us perhaps in January to share the results of their research. I know they said back in. October, they had somebody who was doing research on it. Looking to hear more on that as more E V T Z projects come down the pipeline.
Yeah, and I I am pushing them as far as I can push them to, you know, have those conversations. I think that there was one hurdle where there was some objections related to jurisdiction between. Who's going to be regulating the actual parking? But I, that does not mean that it's advanced farther in terms of. Becoming a reality, but I will, you know, we meet with those folks. You know, several times a week. So I'll talk to Jim and I I don't see why they would not come to a meeting in January to talk about it and. I I think the, I, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
The more you guys push them as opposed to just me saying, hey, the commission's asking about it would. You know, maybe if the chairman.
What would?
Why don't we, why don't? Why don't, why don't we put this item on an agenda for one of our January meetings? And let them know that we're very interested in this and that we've put it on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there anything that the public? Can do? Because I know a lot of these questions come to us.
Yeah.
Does the public be directing things directly to other departments?
I would, this is going to get me in trouble. Not by any of you, but it'll get me in trouble if someone I would, you know, you could always reach out to your council reps and. Express your desires and concerns and then they. It stuff has more weight coming that from them than does for me. That's just fact.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. I know you're in a specific position. Thank you.
Tammy?
Hi, thank you, Lou. Anna, just an aside, too, if. Residents want something done, if you call customer service, the main customer service number, it gets logged in. Don't know where it gets sent for something like that, but it does get logged in. I just wanted to ask Steve or Brian, so at the public hearings, the first week of December, if. People make, the public makes a comment. Of something that they think needs to be adjusted, tweaked, whatever. What is the best opportunity for that to happen? Either coming to the here and speaking in person or sending it in in a hard copy letter to to you all. Or can they do both?
They can do both. You know, obviously, if they send a letter in. I would think your preference is they don't necessarily read that letter after you've already hopefully read that. Our intent and plan is I plan on having, you know, Brian and I will be there in person. Michelle and Amelia from our team will be attending virtually. With the idea is that we're going to put together. So anytime someone raises a question or concern, we want to capture that. And then put that into like that similar table format we talked about at the last meeting. And then have a response turned around to you guys within like two days. So that's, that's our goal. Same thing with written correspondences, we'll we'll apply the same. Same standard.
Okay, thank you. And I too would like to wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving and holiday weekend.
Thank you, Tammy. Anything else? If not. I'll ask for motion to adjourn. I'm sorry, Darius, do you want to say something?
Yeah, just to keep in the mind of staff about the proliferation of vape shops and liquor stores. And if there's anything we can do to tackle that issue.
And Westport just banned new vape shops or something. And there's owning code. I'm not advocating it. I just saw it and I was like, that's interesting.
Yeah, I think we, you know, that's a good question. I would like to talk. I'll talk, I I think I actually exchanged emails with. Mark Brants, who you guys met, there was the outside counsel that we brought in to help. And I think he had any, I, because I was like. The question I kind of asked was, do we need to actually define a vape shop? Because. It might make sense to go that route that way. There's a definition of it because you can actually define what you're. Banning or not allowing versus just saying it's a retail place that sells, you know, tobacco related products or something.
Yeah, I think the Westport defines it as a retail shop that. Devotes more than a certain percentage of its floor space to selling smoke based products.
Or primarily promotes or markets.
Yeah, I think that's something we can, you know, address.
Tammy, I see your hand is still up. Did you want to say something else? Oh, okay. All right, then back to my question. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Okay. There are a bunch of hands up. Let's just, all those in favor. Okay, have a great holiday.
Thanks, everyone, for attending. Thanks for the Q and A.
Thank you. Bye bye.